Good evening and welcome to our Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. Would we please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
Our pledge of allegiance is to be flag, on the United States of America, and to govern public, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening to all and especially the all-female board.[73.06][73.06](Laughter). And that's right, it is three nances, isn't it? So tonight, I have to be really, really careful, so if I point to the left or point to the right, you know who I'm talking to.[84.22][84.22](Laughter). And I want to make sure that Mr. Campbell definitely watches this one on cable.[90.42][90.42](Laughter). I ain't worried about it. Alrighty, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Hello.
Communication.
Matt, might I say that it certainly is a lovely board tonight.[111.11][111.11](Laughter). The system-level T-vos composites are scores that assist the growth of the system, the growth of the children in the system. And for the past three years, all reported content areas, and those would be overall literacy, numeracy, and literacy and numeracy combined. For the past three years, Murfreesboro City's teachers have scored solid fives in each of those years, and in each of those areas. And this past year, what you will find, if you look at those scores, is those scores actually doubled in most areas and tripled in some, too. I say that to say that Murfreesboro City has some of the finest teachers in the state. And tonight, we are here to honor the finest of the finest. So at this point in time, I would like to turn this over to Lisa, who will introduce the system and individual school teachers of the year.
It is indeed an honor to my... And before you introduce the 21 outstanding teachers, who are our teachers of the year for Murfreesboro City Schools, these teachers were nominated by their peers, and they are outstanding in their field. And as the principals are actually going to do a little bit of introduction for you, you'll know a lot of their names, probably because you've already heard them in the past, but just to give a snippet of what they're doing in our classroom. If you have not been in one of their classrooms, I invite you to do so. I'm sure they won't mind, because you'll see some great teaching going on in Murfreesboro City Schools. So, we're going to go in alphabetical order, and first, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Payne. And I should say, I'd like to have the principals and the teachers come up with them.
I would like to introduce to you our teacher of the year. She's a native of Murfreesboro. She has been at Bellwood Bowden Preschool for seven years, ever since it started. And I asked her, I said, "Why seven years at the same place?" And she said, "Because I like it here. It's where my heart is." Also, when I talked to her, I asked her, I said, "Tell me some characteristics about you." And she said, "Well, I'm patient, I'm flexible, I'm loud, and I'm going crazy."[259.22][259.22](Laughter). And I said, "No, no." But for me, this teacher is someone who possesses charm. I would like to introduce to you Bellwood Bowden's preschool teacher of the year, Stacy Lynn Poston.[277.12][277.12](Applause).
I just want to thank you, and I want to thank all my peers as well, for nominating me. It was a big honor.[291.38][291.38](Applause).
I'm not going to come back to the podium each time, but Mr. Thompson is sick tonight, so taking his place is Karen Hawkins for Black Fox.
I'd like to introduce Karen Hartley. She represents the primary grades, and Karen is a third-grade teacher at Black Fox. She joined Murfreesboro City Schools in 1998, and has taught third grade throughout her career, every year. I didn't know that about you. Karen is a strong, caring classroom teacher, and she's her PLC leader for third grade. She brings a wealth of knowledge and strong organizational skills to that team, and it's been my pleasure to get to know her through the PLC process. Candy Powers represents the upper grades. She began her career with Murfreesboro in 1998 as well. She's a fifth-grade teacher at Black Fox. And everything that Candy does is accomplished with professionalism, enthusiasm. In addition to her classroom responsibilities, she's the ESP site director. She has been a teacher for Camp Prism, and she also participates as a lead teacher in the STEM grant with MTSU. So... Thank you.[392.53][392.53](Applause).
It is my privilege to be able to introduce our teachers of the year at Bradley Academy. First is Diana McKnight. Diana McKnight is a kindergarten teacher at Bradley. She began at the preschool level. She has spent her entire nine-year career at Bradley Academy. I think the thing I always am amazed about, when I think about Diana and her team that she leads in our PLC, is how far our children grow in one year. Our students in our kindergarten at Bradley, by the time they leave kindergarten, are in the national, are with the national norms, and it's because of the work that Diana does. But also with her cohort friend, who is our interventionist, who is our upper-grade teacher of the year, Kathy Urbina. These two ladies work together, as a whole team, as an interventionist and as a kindergarten teacher. And it's through their working together as leaders, as excellent teachers. Kathy has nine years in the system as well. They came in together, they have a relationship together. But their main focus is the children in the classroom, and that's the thing I admire most about them. And they take those children just as they come. We know that sometimes we can't control all the situations that they come from, but by the end of their kindergarten year, the vast majority are at national standards, and it's because of the work of these two ladies. And it's my privilege to be their principal.[501.41][501.41](Applause).
Good evening, board members. I'm honored to be here today to introduce the teachers of the year at Casey Lane Academy. I'd like to start with Mrs. Laura Roark. Mrs. Roark is currently teaching fourth grade, after having taught sixth grade for the four prior years, and she's also taught at Northfield Elementary and Reeves Rogers, and the vast majority of her career has been here in Murfreesboro City. So, Mrs. Roark is, consistently displays the characteristics of a caring, student-focused teacher that gets results, and that's what you're looking for. We're fortunate to have great teachers, and this year, those great teachers have voted Mrs. Roark the K-4 teacher of the year.[548.38][548.38](Applause). Our upper grades teacher of the year is Sherri McElroy. Ms. McElroy has worked for seven years at Casey Lane Academy, after serving some time in Rutherford County Schools. She's the type of teacher that every parent wants their child to have, because what she brings is a combination of high expectations, good behavior, and also having fun while learning. Those students have fun in her classroom, and she makes sure that they learn as well. But that's just a few of the reasons that the teachers at Casey Lane voted Ms. McElroy teacher of the year.[583.88][583.88](Applause).
I have the honor of standing in for Dr. Linda Clark this evening, for Discovery School, and announcing Ms. Stacy Burt. She is our sixth-grade teacher and our upper-grade representative as teacher of the year. She served our school in a great number of ways, including on our leadership team and our PLC group, also leads her team of one for sixth grade, which is kind of exciting to be a team of one. But also, she has, probably the biggest thing she's famous for in our building is her work on the best robotics team. She heads a robotics team that competes with high school students, and we rock in that because of her efforts. And this year, Tacoma, great many awards, and much of that is thanks to the great work that she does in that project. And also, she works very closely with the Science Olympiad, and in building up the science skills across our school at many, many grade levels, in addition to her work in the sixth grade. She is pursuing her doctorate in gifted studies at this time, and she hails to us from Florida, though she has been our special gift now for, I guess this is your fourth year? Her fourth year with us at Discovery. So we're very lucky and blessed to have her. Our primary teacher is expecting a baby this year. She's unable to join us this evening, but she too is a very valuable member of our team. Her name is Shonda Verbic. And she too serves as the team leader for the first-grade team. She works diligently in building writing skills among the first-grade team, and really works as a leader in building those skills and in harnessing the power of her team. And they're constantly studying new opportunities that are available for students in building that. Writing is a big, big deal in first grade. So, thank you so much.[708.01][708.01](Applause).
It is my privilege as well to introduce to you our teachers of the year from Segal. First, we have Cindy Peaster, and she is actually our music teacher, who's representing our K-3 teachers. She does a phenomenal job involving our whole school, including all of our special-needs children. She has been at Segal for 14 years, but prior to Segal, she was in Rutherford County, with one of our board members, Mr. Butch Campbell, who's not here to see her get this award. But she does an amazing job at our school, and we are so thankful to have her. Our other representative is Buffy Davenport. She's our fourth-through-sixth-grade teacher. She teaches fifth grade, though. I can't see you, Buffy. Come here. She serves as our PLC leader this year, and also on our leadership team. We have a grade level of six teachers, and she does a phenomenal job bringing them together to help serve our whole school. So we are very thankful at Segal for both Cindy and Buffy. So, thank you.[781.23][781.23](Applause).
I'm also honored this evening to represent Barbara Sales from Hobgood Elementary. And I want to congratulate these two fine ladies as being selected for teacher of the year. Representing our early primary grades is Treese Holmes. She serves as our school counselor. Most anyone who's from the Murfreesboro area knows Treese. She grew up in this area, and she was telling me this great story about how, as a little girl, she used to play on the Murfreesboro City Schools buses, because she lived next door to where we used to store the buses.[821.63][821.63](Laughter). So, I think you could say she's been in our schools forever. But she's been with us at Hobgood, actually she started at the same time I did, five years ago. And she hosts a fantastic Black History Month event each year, and just did a fantastic parade, which we were honored to have Ms. Wade participate in with us, as well as a variety of other community members. But I think the most memorable thing that makes her important to our staff is that she's standing in the hallway to meet students, and she has certain students that she's checking in with each and every day, to make sure that they're starting their day ready to learn, and on task, and on focus. And some of our friends need extra special attention, and she's right there waiting for them. And following up throughout the day to make sure that they are where they need to be, getting it done. So, yay, Ms. Holmes.[868.23][868.23](Applause).
In our upper grades, we have Ms. Gunnar Magnusson. She is sort of new to Tennessee, but she has been with us at Hobgood now. This is her third year, and she's a master teacher. She has been working with us diligently in the area of mathematics and science, in particular, though she has really broadened her horizons in working with us in social studies, and has become quite a reading-in-the-content-area teacher in social studies. She was one of the first people to help us develop our after-school tutoring program, and one of the first ones to raise her hand and say, "I'll be there. I'll do that." She's there, probably one of the first people in the building every morning, one of the last ones to leave every night. And she's there, I want to say, every Saturday, when I'm there turning the alarm off, there's Ms. Magnusson, reading me in the morning. And so, she's very diligent in her commitment to the students, so that when the students are in the building, she's always available to them. And she's offering, in addition to the structured tutoring, she's offering tutoring before school, as well as working on the Science Olympiad team, and everything's science, go, go, go.[936.88][936.88](Applause).
Before I introduce my two fabulous teachers, I have to say just one little thing about Mrs. Rainier. This is Mrs. Rainier's first official board meeting, and I just want to welcome her to the board, and tell her that her John Pittard family is very proud of her, and we know she's going to do a great job.[970.01][970.01](Applause). My K-4 winner for John Pittard is Jennifer Grimes. This side, sorry, I can't see from the TV. Jennifer started with me at Reeves Rogers nine years ago, and she taught sixth grade for me in the beginning. She's now in fourth. She is one of those sweet, quiet teachers that has an unbelievable calming effect on her learning environment. Her children get the most out of every lesson. Her kids are focused. I know this for a fact, as I was just in her room, what, last week, for your unannounced observation?[1010.41][1010.41](Laughter). So, it was fabulous. And then, of course, I have Francina Austin on that side, my 5-8 winner. Francina also started with me at Reeves Rogers eight years ago, and yes, I know, Gary, you're saying I'm old because I hired both of these people, and yes, you're right, but that's okay. I'm happy to have hired both of these people. I'm proud to. And she is still teaching sixth grade. And for any of you that have ever taught sixth grade, you've got to know what a feat that is. I mean, you've got to love sixth grade to stay in it that long. But Francina has an energy and enthusiasm that are contagious. Her kids love to be around her, they love to learn from her, and I know this firsthand because my daughter was in Francina Austin's classroom five years ago. And she still will laugh and talk about things that Ms. Austin did five years ago in sixth grade, and she is a junior in high school. I think another thing that's really interesting, these girls met each other while working at the Hobgood ESP program in college. So they've been buddies a long time, and now, this year, they happen to be both of my teachers of the year. So we're very proud of them.[1076.65][1076.65](Applause).
As I wait for my teacher of the year to come up, I will tell you that Ms. Austin was my daughter's teacher, too, so she's good stock. I'm representing Mitchell Nielsen Schools, and Peggy Courier is our teacher of the year for our primary grades. Peggy's been teaching for 30 years, 20 with Murfreesboro City. She is a very dedicated teacher. She teaches second grade, and is one of those very engaging teachers who puts kids first in everything they do. She works with Parks and Rec to do our FUN program, which is Families Understanding Nature and Nutrition, and has written with some teachers at Bradley, a whole science curriculum. So she spent last summer, her break time, writing curriculum for our kids, and so she does that, and we appreciate that very much. She represents our school very, very well. This is not her first teacher of the year award, so she is, she has earned several, and she earns that very much. Our upper-grade teacher of the year is Dion McCullough. She can't be here tonight. She is auditioning for the Color Purple tonight, so that's something that she's doing tonight. She is our upper-grade teacher, fabulous teacher, one of the most engaging teachers I've seen, and I'm proud to work with both of these ladies.[1163.48][1163.48](Applause).
Y'all aren't going to stand behind me. Come up here.[1178.65][1178.65](Laughter). We're a team at Northfield.
And it makes you look so much better.
Don't I look better with both of them beside me? It is with the greatest honor that I'd like to introduce Sherri Arnett and Kristi Nitter as Northfield's teachers of the year. Ms. Arnett's been teaching for 21 years, and she is a fourth-grade teacher at Northfield. She has been a mentor and an exemplary teacher for our colleagues throughout the system. She's also the system teacher of the year. Ms. Nitter, she's our school guidance counselor, and has been in education for 26 years. She works closely with her students, parents, and community members. Ms. Nitter is very active in a positive environment that we have at Northfield. But most of all, the quality that both these ladies have, that is, makes it very special, is they're very caring for the students. And so, we are very fortunate to have Ms. Arnett and Ms. Nitter as teachers of the year at Northfield. Thank you.[1261.51][1261.51](Applause).
Mr. Thompson could not be here to, excuse me, not Mr. Thompson, Ms. Stevens, is actually working on her doctorate along with another of her teachers, and that would be Juliana Marata, who is the teacher of the year at Scales for the K-4 level. Julie is a second-grade teacher. I think the words that would describe her probably, consummate professional, very organized, very intently oriented to children, but yet at the same time, very caring. Again, I go back to the organized. I think that if you want to get organized, go see Juliana Marata, and she can take care of it for you. But that's important, because children know what to expect, and that's thrilling. For the upper grades at Scales, we have Malala Wommack. Malala Wommack is a fifth-grade teacher, and she's actually working on her master, so the reason that those ladies are not here tonight is because they understand that it's important for them to continue learning. Malala is a very gentle, caring person. She's very child-centered, as are all of our teachers. I think that Malala has a quiet quality, and you don't realize the strength that she contains until you get to know her. So, both of the Scales teachers of the year certainly deserve it, Juliana Marata and also Malala Wommack.[1348.23][1348.23](Applause). At this time, I'd like for the system teachers of the year, Sherri Arnett from Northfield, level K-4, and Stacy Burt, level 5-6, to come up and stand beside Ms. Trail.[1366.15][1366.15](Applause).
This has been a lot of firsts for me, obviously, with being new to the system, and to be able to actually look at the applications for teacher of the year has been amazing. So, with these two ladies are now competing on a regional level, and when you see their applications, you will know that we are so, it's amazing what all they are doing for the kids and for our school systems. So, we want to take time to honor them once again, and I have actually, I was able to see both of them teach, just by coincidence, and they are awesome teachers, and they make those kids learn, and they don't even know they're learning, so it's awesome. But I want to take time now to not only recognize them, but for all of our teachers of the year to stand up once again, and that way we can give you a round of applause. And I know you all have kids at home, so you're looking forward to getting home a little bit, I'm sure, as well. So, can they all, Chairman Wade, can they stand up and us give them applause?[1428.15][1428.15](Applause).
Ms. Phillips?
I did want to take just a moment and say something. It's just a privilege to be in here with so many of y'all. I've been fortunate enough to either visit with you briefly in your classroom, work with Murph with you, or as far as Ms. Treese goes, we went to college together, and best of all, I've had some of these teachers for my own kids. This is an outstanding group of educators, and I really appreciate what you all do. Wanted to say that.[1472.41][1472.41](Applause).
We will actually be celebrating the teachers of the year with an awards reception that will be March 6 at Oakland Mansion, and they're not going to leave until I tell them to leave. So, if you all would be, it's time, you can go if you want to go.[1488.15][1488.15](Laughter).
You're dismissed.[1490.15][1490.15](Laughter).
You know when you see them going up and then going down.[1497.41][1497.41](Laughter). Thank you, and thank you, principals, for introducing them. Really appreciate that. At this time, I'd like for Lisa Trail to come up once again, please, and to give an update on the Excellence in Education celebration, if she's there. Did she just leave? Okay?[1519.15][1519.15](Laughter). She will probably be back. I will tell you that the Excellence in Education celebration, I think this year was probably more successful than it has been at any year in the past, and I know that some of you worked very hard on that celebration. I really appreciate the City Schools Foundation and the work that they do. They have given the children of this city an amazing amount, Lisa, come on up to podium, because I want you to give an update. They have given the children of this school system an amazing amount of support, monetary support, and I really appreciate their work. And Lisa, would you like to say anything, please, about an update on the celebration itself, or any folks that you would want to acknowledge?
Sure. We had our largest celebration this year. We had the most, I think, they've had in the past five years. Scales did a tremendous job of helping us decorate and organize, and I can't say enough about how much they pulled together. They were the featured school, and they also were the worker bees, and we appreciated them. We have a wonderful board for our foundation. Ms. Smith, obviously, is one of the leaders, especially when it comes to our excellence in education. So, she really set the path for us, and had a great agenda, and we were hopefully able to achieve, based on what the foundation board set forth for us. They have given over $300,000 back to our school systems, and that is such a great amount that goes to work for our schools, for our kids every day. This year, I hope we don't have all of our final tallies in, but I think we'll actually make more this year than we've ever made. And again, that will go right back to the kids, to science, math, and parity funds. They, I think I announced last time, but I'll go ahead and reiterate, that the foundation gave $30,000 this year to our schools in the form of parity funds. So, a lot of the schools who can't make as big a fundraisers are really realizing the benefit of having a foundation in our school system.
And we really appreciate the fact that John Hood allowed himself to be roasted, and also that Andy Wommack certainly helped with that, and also all of the, I guess, roasters, I guess is what we would call them, but the roasters that were there that night. But it was a wonderful night, and appreciate very much the work of the board, Ms. Smith, your work, and also Lisa and Leslie Edderly for working with them. Thank you very much. Principal Roseanne Barton would like to acknowledge Bill Air Baptist Church for the programs I-Moms and All ProDads, and that is conducted for the John Pittard parents throughout the year, and they also provided lunch for the staff on January 24. TVA has communicated that our school district will be receiving $40,339 for energy rights solutions for business incentive. Gary Anderson, that's a lot to say about saving, saving energy, I have to tell you. But it has to do with our lighting project that was completed this past summer. I'd also like to thank the Charity Circle. They have donated generously $1,000 to the City Schools Foundation, which will in turn be used to support the Franklin Heights Family Learning and Resource Center. Rachel Kirk, an MTSU librarian, wrote and received a public service grant in the amount of $800 to set up a small library system at the Franklin Heights Center, and students will be able to access books online through an information licensing service there. I'd like to remind you that Read Across America is Friday, March 2. I'm sure some of you will be getting invitations to read, if you haven't already. And also, would like to congratulate, although he is not here, and it may be because now he is so famous, but we'd like to congratulate board member Butch Campbell on his induction into the TSSAA Hall of Fame. The ceremony will take place at the Embassy Suites on April 21, with lunch beginning at 11:00 a.m. And Ms. Wade, those are the communications.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. We'll now go to consent items. Is there a motion, or is there anything on consent items that you have a question about before we answer a motion for the approval?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Consent items.
Yes.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Action items, Mrs. Baker? Action items, Mrs. Baker?
Okay, the first action item that you have before you is approval on first reading of field trip, the field trip policy, which is Board Policy IS-9. And actually, one of my recommendations would be to change the title from Field Trips to School Trips, because the policy has been rewritten to reflect three different categories of school trips. And those trips are broken down into field trips that are defined as travel within the same day and limited to a radius of 150 miles from the school. Examples of those type of field trips could include going to something in Nashville, or here locally, or Huntsville Space Center or Mammoth Cave. And those would just require our standard off-campus trip approval form. The next category of school trips would encompass competitions and performances. Those are defined as trips made on a scheduled basis and that are integral to an ongoing operation of an authorized program. Some examples of those type of school trips would encompass athletic contests, music competitions, the science olympiad, the robotics competitions. And those, any of the competitions or performances which do not involve overnight stays, or do not involve travel in excess of 150 miles, will receive blanket approval from the director and the board when the program guidelines and schedules are approved. Now, if it is a competition or performance which involves an overnight stay, it would then fall into our next category of school trips, an excursion. And an excursion requires a notarized travel permission, an emergency medical release form, and an off-campus trip approval form. An excursion is defined as an overnight stay, or it is a trip that is in excess of 150 miles. An example of such a school trip would encompass the land between the lakes trips that take place every year. As I said, these will require the more extensive approval forms, because the children are being taken either outside 150-mile radius, or it's a overnight stay. Some of the factors that teachers and principals are expected to consider when selecting a school trip would include the value of the activity to the particular class group in class groups. It would also include the relationship of the school trip activity to a particular aspect of classroom instruction, the suitability of the activity and the distance traveled in terms of the age levels participating in the trip, the mode and availability of Murfreesboro City School Board-approved transportation, and the cost of the trip. There are a list of various guidelines for planning and conducting field trips. Any teacher desiring to take a group of students on an educational field trip must approve, must receive advanced approval of their principal. They need to define the purpose of the field trip and make sure that it reflects careful planning. A fee, if there is bus transportation involved, a fee would be charged to the school when the buses are used. Signed parental permission forms are required for any school trips, and those forms have certain information that they must contain. Any trips that are taken outside normal school hours must be approved by the director or the director's designate need, a minimum of 20 working days prior to the trip. The director will notify the school of the approval, and of course, the required forms need to be completed. For all trips outside of normal school hours, the chaperones for the trip need to be approved by the principal and the director, or the director's designate need in advance of the trip. At least one regular staff member from the school must accompany the students on the trip, and there must be one female and one male chaperone for the trip if it is a mixed Additionally, students are not to be penalized for going on school-sponsored trips. Teachers are to allow the students to make up their classwork. If an accident occurs on a trip, of course, the teachers would need to utilize the appropriate reporting forms, and if it is a very serious accident, they need to immediately notify their principal and the director. And any school-sponsored trips not meeting the educationally beneficial criteria as defined in this section have to have prior approval of the director or the director's designate need. And any trip excursion which is overnight and/or out of state must be approved by the director and the board. In order to let bids for such overnight or out-of-state trips, 60 days prior approval is required, approval 60 days prior to the trip is required. All other trip and excursions that are outside normal school hours but are within the state and do not require overnight stays have a 20-day prior notice requirement for approval. Of course, there is an exception if some special situation arises that doesn't allow for these 60 and 20-day notices, but there is an exception to allow for those situations. Additionally, by September 15th of each year, each school is to submit to the director a list of any of their proposed overnight or out-of-state field trips. For example, that would include the annual sixth-grade environmental trip. And again, if some unplanned, unexpected opportunity arises, there is an exception provided for that. Trips that are planned by parents or teachers for students during after-school hours which have not received the approval of the principal, the director shall not be considered Murfreesboro City School-approved field trips, even if the information containing the trip is, refers to the school by name, or is made available in school. And no employee shall state or imply that a trip is an authorized field trip if it has not received approval per this policy. And the Murfreesboro City School Board shall have no responsibility or liability for any trip which has not been an authorized field trip under the policy. And that is an overview of this new policy. It's a rewrite of the prior field trip policy.
Ms. Phillips, then Ms. Smith?
I have a question. We used to have our policy about stating only two field trips a year. Does this negate that policy?
What you have in there, if you look at it, it does say that unusual opportunities and circumstances should exist when a principal agrees to authorize more than two school trips for class group, given, during a given academic school year. And usually, if there's an exception to be made, then they will let me know what that circumstance is. But I can see that. And for example, if we have a partnership with MTSU, and we need, anytime we have really students that are off-campus, we need to have some sort of form there. So, that would be one of those examples where you would have, certainly, that partnership would be one where I could see a school going more than two times and using that. So, those kinds of circumstances. I have not had, I don't think I've had any complaints for any principals about not having enough field trips or enough leniency for teachers to be able to do what they need to do.
Well, that sounds good. That sounds good. A follow-up question is, it talks about the, now, the principal approving the parents that accompany, the chaperones. Is there, do we need to, is there, is there, do we need to add a line about there not being arbitrarily refused to allow? I mean, there's no, they can't have an arbitrary reason for not allowing a parent to accompany a group.
No, but I think anytime that you have anything that happens in a school, or the principal is ultimately responsible for everything in that school, and is responsible for the safety of the children. So, I think that it's pretty logical for the principal to have a say-so about who is allowed to go, who's not allowed to go for that reason.
I just think, I just want us to be very careful that we don't discourage parents for coming in any way, you know, for being involved. I just want to make sure that parents are not arbitrarily denied the privilege of accompanying their children on a field trip. So, that's just something I want to protect, the family's rights too, so. Do you have a question? I'm finished.
Ms. Smith?
Actually, my question involved the line 55 and 56 about the limit to two field trips as well, and I did have a teacher approach me about it. And I said, this so happens, we're going to be bringing that up. So, the, I really value school trips. I think that it shows the kids that what they're learning is not just on paper, but has a real-world value. So, I'm not sure that we really should, I mean, put it in ink that it's two school trips a year. And I certainly am not sure that a field trip to the Discovery Center or to MTSU really should count as one of those two field trips. That's just one of the advantages of living in Murfreesboro.
No, I agree with that. That's the reason, as I've said, when you look at, when you look at this, there is not, you can only do two field trips a year. But it's up to the board what you want to put there.
But, I'm sorry, it does say that.
No, it says unusual opportunities and circumstances, and certainly, the relationship we have with those organizations within our city, such as Discovery Center, such as going to other schools, such as going to MTSU, with those, you're going to have the principals that authorize that. Now, if there's different wording there that you want, we certainly can look at that.
I probably would move that we change the wording on that particular.
Okay, let me get with the principals then, and what I'll do is come back to you with proposed wording there.
Thank you.
All right, sure.
Dr. Andrews, and then Mrs. Rineer, and then Ms. Phillips, and then Mrs. Duggan.
Yeah, I think that they're competing goods with the field trip issue. They do cost money, and there's such emphasis on getting a lot of work done in the school year. So, I think that's where that comes from. And I think that we will get good information from the principals about what they think. You know, if I, I would, I can see the point of liking to go on one every week. That would be, that would be great, and it would, it would often be educational, and maybe more educational than what happens in the classroom. But there is sort of a competing good issue when you're talking about field trips. So, I do like that this leaves it up to the discretion of the principals and does give a little bit of guidance. I think it's good that we have some consistency across the system, and we don't have some schools where the kids are going on six field trips a year, and other schools where they're going on two. I think there needs to be consistency there, but I like the idea of taking that back to the, the students. And then, I think you were talking, which lines were you talking about?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look.
No, no, no.
You're talking, I didn't, I didn't quote a line. It was Ms. Smith that referenced the lines.
I was talking about 56 and 57.
Okay. All righty.
Ms. Rineer?
Yes, I think mine is more a question for the teachers, per se, on lines 72 and 73. Maybe it's just that I need clarification in my own mind. 72 and 73 just say that signed parental permission forms must be obtained from every student making an off-campus trip beyond the immediate vicinity of the school. What would you consider the immediate vicinity of the school? In the old days, when I began teaching, and I was at Reeves Rogers, we would take our children and walk around the block for nature hikes. And then, at a point in time, it became necessary that you could no longer do that without a permission slip. So, I think I would like that clarified, not only for me, but perhaps for the teachers. What is considered the vicinity of the school? Is that just the school grounds?
Good point. Good point. My question, I had a couple of questions. My first question is, you said that, it says that there will be a charge to the school for the use of a bus for a field trip. The school will be charged?
Right. Ms. Anderson, do you want to address that?
Yes, we charge the individual schools for the field trips, for the transportation, the driver themselves. We do not charge for mileage or for fuel on those field trips. One of the things that we had gone under in the past was the first trip was free per class, but what happened was we started to have classes doubling up. So, one school, one class will be on their first trip of the year, another will be on the second trip of the year, and we didn't want to divvy up the expenditures. So, we just charge for the driver's time.
Now, is this going to create, I don't know what line item that this would come out of for the schools. Is this going to create a burden for any of our schools that maybe have, they're using their funds to help kids in other ways that are really struggling in some way?
Under the new state laws, that as you approve the fees for field trips at each meeting, that's what that is about. That is because anytime they leave school, it's considered part of an academic day, and they have to, they have to pass that on to everyone. So, there are some children that don't pay, or can't pay, and those schools then have to come up with that money.
So, where do the schools, which budget area do the schools get that money from?
I think we could ask individual schools. They all do it differently. Some get it from PTO funds, some get it from individual fundraisers that a particular class may be putting on, like the sixth-grade field trip. They may sell, sixth graders may sell the concessions during the basketball games to raise money for that. It comes from different areas.
Not to beat a dead horse, but we all know that our schools do not raise funds equally. They don't have the same capacity to raise the same funds. So, I just want to make sure that the certain schools are not penalized because they can't raise funds to pay the bus driver for the field trip. So, and then I have one more follow-up question, if Ms. Smith has something to address that.
I know one place that part of the funding comes from is the City Schools Foundation, and that is part of the reason that it was formed, to provide the parity for those. And for example, the sixth-grade field trip to Huntsville has been funded several times, I believe, to buy the City Schools Foundation, so that it does provide the parity of funds. So, it, I'm not sure that there might not be more opportunities for those schools at times, but.
I mean, I think that's, you know, it's excellent that the City Schools Foundation does that. I just, you know, sometimes with timing, you wonder if those schools, if a field trip came up, would they have time to apply to the foundation, to get the money, to pay the bus driver? It's just, you know, I worry about a catch-22 there. My follow-up question about, going back to the two field trips a year, Dr. Andrews did reference some of the history about why that was in place, and I think that was good, reminding us about that. I was wondering if Ms. Baker had more information that she could share with us about the history of when that was put in place, and why it might have been put in place. I know I'm putting on the spot, because I didn't expect, you know.
I can just tell you, this policy was originally adopted in 1979, and has only been revised twice, in 1985 and 1999. So, I'm not sure when it actually went into the policy, but it's been there at least since 1999.
May I say that? I think 99.
Thank you.
Ms. Duggan?
I don't think the way it's worded currently about two school field trips a year is a problem. Of the years I taught in the district, I think we took at least three every year, but they were all for academic purposes, so there was never really a question asked. I think another thing that we do have to consider is, we're fortunate that we own our own buses. So, we are able to provide field trips for students without having to pass on the cost of actually paying a bus driver who would own his own bus, and for the gas and all of that. And with the way gas is going up, I think that, you know, that is a cost to our district. But I can't imagine a teacher would have a problem taking maybe even four, five, or six if they were MTSU and related to, you know, our STEM project and other things that we're doing, and hopefully, doing district-wide. As far as the expenditure and who pays for this, I would just like to add that I know that there are times when teachers pay for children, that, you know, and I know that still goes on, even though we've got the wonderful City Schools Foundation. I know of outside agencies who have actually paid for our field trips before, so children can go, even in schools who may not be receiving parity money. So, just a comment about that. And this is on first reading, so for those of us that'd like to see some changes, I think we should zip those over to Kelly, and she can have those for us at our next work session.
Dr. Andrews?
I wanted to go back to the aspect of this that involves volunteer. I wanted to go back to the aspect of this that involves volunteers. And I wonder if we shouldn't refer to the school volunteer approval procedure in the field trip policy? Because the parents that do accompany on a field trip will have to fill out a volunteer form. And if they're going to be with students without a Murfreesboro City Schools employee right with them, then they even have to undergo a criminal background check. So, we might want to reference that perhaps. Another thing I wanted to point out about the foundation is that they help with field trips two ways. One is the schools can get a donation for that particular field trip, and that has happened. We've had some very generous donors who will actually subsidize a particular field trip. The other way is through the parity money. And that parity money goes to the schools, and it is not encumbered. The school principal can do whatever the principal would like with that. There's also, I couldn't tell you the amount of money that goes to the schools each year per child, but that money goes to each school. And the principals have the responsibility to pay for some children to go on school trips. I mean, it's basically required that if there are children who could not pay, that they'd get, that they are still allowed to go. And that can come out of that money as well. That's just sort of a information piece.
Was there something that you wanted Mrs. Baker to bring back to us during our work session on this policy? It's been good conversation about it, but I haven't really heard any changing of words anywhere.
Just referencing the school volunteer approval procedure, that that would have to be followed for any chaperones.
And I think also that Ms. Renier wanted clarification on the school vicinity. And I think you could actually add the word "school campus," and that would clarify that piece. Because that's how I interpret it, but.
And I did want her to look at a way that would give a little more description, I guess, on the line 56, 57.
And I would like for there to be something that would designate that parents will not be arbitrarily denied the privilege of escorting their kids on a field trip.
Tell you what we'll do. There's a lot of words going around and changing. How about, to make it easy for Ms. Baker, because she's having to take a few minutes, write, we've got paper up here. If you write your change, do you want them just to blurt the change out to you?
I've got it.
You're going to write it?
She said you got it.
You got all of them? Okay, now, back to Ms. Smith before we leave. Did you have some word, you had some word change on yours? Do you?
I didn't have a word change. I would like to loosen it up a little bit, to describe it in a way that people, if they do have some great opportunities to go, I do have a problem with it being two school trips a year because I know I have signed a field trip form this year for MTSU. And it's across the street from my children's school. So, if that counts, then we've got, I mean, I would like it to be loosened up a little bit. And I know it doesn't cost very much to walk across.
And it may be that we might need to get Mr. Anderson a list of the field trips or approximately the number. That might help the board, too.
Okay. Ms. Renier, you had a question or comment?
Well, my comment is just, having taught at Reeves Rogers, or now Discovery School at Reeves Rogers, my concern about not having a permission slip is, you know, we would take the children across the street. At one point in time, we had to have crossing guard, get, crossing guard, garb to wear, a sign to hold to stop the traffic, get across the street, go through the parking lots, go down the streets with all the MTSU students leaving and commuting. And it is rather dangerous. And I do think I would not give up a permission slip in that regard. I think that if you're on the same side of the street, you're not crossing streets, I could see that that might not be necessary. For instance, a walk in the neighborhood around the block or whatever. But crossing Greenland Drive and going through MTSU campus, I think you would want, at least to, the parents would be aware, instead of deciding on that particular day, oh, let's go do this. I just think you, for legal reasons, it might be better.
I totally agree, I totally agree with that. I just don't want that to count and hinder a teacher to feel like he or she could not take another field trip because they'd taken that field trip.
Ms. Duggan?
I do think we might need some input from Mr. Anderson concerning maybe the possible impact on the budget when it comes to gas, because currently, the city school system picks up the bulk of that. So, I know that's something that needs to be part of the mix. And I'm in total agreement of kids being able to take as many field trips as they need if it's going to, you know, add to their academic careers. Because it's amazing, sometimes, the number of children within our own city who have never set foot on the MTSU campus. So, you know, it's, all field trips have a very valuable purpose. But I also think we might need to look at budget, impact on the budget, too.
Ms. Phillips?
I like the way the policy is worded regarding that, because I think having two is a guideline, a general guideline, is a good idea. And having the flexibility to add more. I'm with Ms. Smith. I don't think that a big field trip should be denied because you went to MTSU. I don't think that that should really count. On the other hand, you know, I just feel like, also, I don't want our principals to suddenly be inundated by requests to go here and there and everywhere else, you know, because teachers get excited about, you know, all the things they want to be able to give the children, you know, to be able to present to the children, enrich the children's lives. So, I think having that too, as it's just a general guideline, is probably a good thing. General, but with lots of flexibility.
Ms. Renier?
Perhaps if we just deleted the words "unusual opportunities" and "circumstances" and just started with "circumstances may exist" when a principal agrees to authorize more than two.
Excellent. I like that.
Do we need a motion to move this one on first reading? I saw moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose at this time? Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Okay. The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy IS-10, School Volunteers. It is replacing the previous policy, Community Resource Persons. And this policy's before you on first reading. I'll let Mr. Ringstaff discuss that policy.
Thank you. As you know, parents and other citizens of Murfreesboro have a great deal for our success in Murfreesboro City Schools. But to ensure the safety of our children and for liability purposes, we developed this new policy titled School Volunteers. If you'll look, I'll do the highlights, and we'll go with the procedure as well. In line 10, the grading papers is a teacher's responsibility. We deleted that line. And then, in line 20, it says, "All volunteers must follow the MCSU School Volunteer Approval Procedure," which we'll go over in a second. And then, in line 25, we added Classroom Grades. The School Volunteer Approval Procedure, this policy will not affect the majority of our volunteers. Because the majority of our volunteers go into the classroom, read to the students, et cetera. There's three tiers for our school approval procedure. The first tier, that's the occasional volunteer who's under constant supervision by MCS employee. Those are the individuals who work the school fairs, field days, book fairs, occasional classroom visit, or speaker, the PTA, PTO meetings, and fundraising events, and then athletic concessions. Those individuals do not need to do an application, a volunteer application, or a background check, or anything. They just sign in, go through the proper procedures that they currently do. The second tier, that is a regular volunteer. However, they're still under constant supervision of the MCS employee. They do need to complete a volunteer application, which is attached, and the principal must sign off, or the supervisor must sign off, stating that they agree to have this volunteer at the school. And it asks questions about prior convictions, arrests, et cetera. And this is for the safety of our children. Tier three, this is the volunteer who comes in, takes a child to another classroom or another room to do one-on-one tutoring without, not in view of an MCS employee, sits one-on-one. That individual must complete an MCS volunteer application, plus go through the background check of MCS. They must go through Human Resources and get a background check. This will protect us as well as the children. And then, second page of the Volunteer Approval Procedure, it talks about items that may prohibit a volunteer, excuse me, an individual from volunteering in our school. Questions?
Ms. Duggan?
I know we had some good conversation in our last work session. And afterwards, I realized I didn't ask a question. And that question is, if a person has a background check from another agency, will you accept that if they show documentation?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
It must be the TBI, FBI background check.
Yes, but just so you wouldn't have the expense of yet running another one.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
At first, when I read all this, I was a little nervous about all the rules, you know, encumbering people to volunteer with the schools. But really, in this, as I've talked to other people, it seems like it's, it just, we need to take care of our kids. And the form that he has given us, it looks like to me, and just tell me if I'm wrong, that this is just something at the beginning of school, that if parents are regular volunteers, we would just complete this. And it would just be, you know, one additional minute for the day, you know.
Exactly. You get that big pack.
Right. So, it would be just like that. It's, standing alone, it seems like a big deal. But for the parent's time and the ones that volunteer, I think it would be worth it. And for my own children's safety, I also think it's, as you read all the different groupings of how one might volunteer, it is good to have a little bit of background who's with our children.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
I move that we accept this one on first reading.
I have a comment.
Question?
I just had a comment. Yeah, I'm like Ms. Smith down there in the first going, oh, what is all this? But really, like Mr. Ringstaff said, most of our volunteers will not be affected by this. And it's not a big deal. It's just a little short, a little short page here. It just takes a minute to do it. I particularly like that on the second level or tier, it talks about confidentiality and acknowledging the FERPA requirements. I think we have to make some movement to make the parents aware exactly what FERPA is. And maybe we need to state that, because we can't expect them to abide by it if they don't really clearly understand what FERPA is. So, maybe we need to think about that. And I, you know, we do have to keep, this is very brief, very short, and we have to keep the kids safe. And so, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Okay, the next policy you have before you on first reading is Board Policy IS-16, Relations with Accrediting Agencies. The only change that has been made to this policy is that the term, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, has been changed to Advanced Ed.
I move we approve this on first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Okay, the next policy that you have before you on first reading is Board Policy IS-17, Relations with Education Research and Services Center. The changes that have been made to this policy include, you can see there, item six, the value of the project for the individual school has been deleted. And also, and the, in item seven, under projects involving student researchers, must have prior written approval of an advisor of the institution and the Institutional Review Board in which the student is enrolled. The words Institutional Review Board has been added. And that is a board at universities that reviews research projects that students are doing.
I move we accept it on first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Okay, the last policy that you have before you on first reading is Board Policy IS-18, Student Teaching Internships and Practicums. This has basically been amended to include the language and interns and practicum students because we do have situations where we have interns from other departments of universities, such as school counselors, people in those areas, or social workers may come to our schools to get experience and do internships. I know nursing students sometimes come and do internships. So, that has been written to expand that area. It also has added the language, prior to implementation of student teaching, internships, and practica, an agreement of cooperative understanding between Murfreesboro City Schools and the college or university must be signed by the director and a representative of the college and university. And that is standard practice now among universities to have those agreements signed with school systems. A student teacher shall be accorded the same protections of the laws as a certified teacher and shall comply with all rules and regulations of the board and observe all duties of teachers as set forth in state statute. That language is directly from TCA 49-503 that deals with student teachers. It is required language.
Are there any questions? Here are none?
I move we accept this on first reading.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Your next item is the approval of construction bids for Discovery Schools HVAC system. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gilbert. If you remember back a while ago, we got a $1 million loan from the state of Tennessee at 0% interest. And this is for the HVAC classrooms at Discovery School. When we received our bids, the bids came in substantially lower than we had anticipated, which means we're asking you tonight to approve the low bidder of $742,000 on doing the classrooms. We hope to bring back to you later to add to that scope of work, the cafeteria and the gymnasium. They were not in the original scope because we were focusing on making sure our classrooms were the best learning environment. But it looks like we will have enough money left over in this predetermined loan amount to be able to do that. But tonight, we're just asking for your approval on the low bidder to do the HVAC systems at Discovery School. And this will happen this summer, when we will close the school down for ESP and everything to get that whole school redone.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson? Ms. Renier?
When do you anticipate working on the cafeteria and the gym?
We hope to have bids back in here in the next two weeks to bring back to you next month. And if, and if, and if we do, we'll do it at the same time. So, it'll be done over the next summer.
I move we approve this.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Under reports and information, you have several items. And I'm going to let Mr. Anderson handle this section, because most of them are his.
Okay, the first one is the annual audit report. I'd like to ask Mr. Larry Felts from Crossland Associates to come up and present with you the audit report. Tonight, you receive the communication with the school board. This document is basically a summary of the actual audit that we had completed this year. And before Mr. Felts speaks, I'd like to also acknowledge Galena Bell, our Finance Director. Galena is the responsible party in our district for handling all the communications with this. And I just want to acknowledge Ms. Bell. She's way over here. She's very shy. She's very camera shy. That she is the one who does all this work with her staff to put together the audit information for Mr. Felts and Crossland Associates.
Before we get started, if you don't mind.
Before we get started, if you don't mind, Ms. Philip, do you have a question or a comment?
I just wanted to let you know, we appreciate your patience waiting through the whole meeting, and Ms. Bell over there, too, before you were able to get up and speak. But what you have to say, I think, is very important, and important for people to know. So thank you all for your patience.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with the outstanding educators that were here earlier. As Mr. Anderson stated, I'm Larry Felts. I'm a principal with Crossland Associates, and along with Rich Lockwood, another one of our principals, we were the engagement leaders on the audit of Murfreesboro City Schools. Crossland Associates is pleased to be of service to Murfreesboro City Schools, and I'm pleased to be here to make this report. By any measure, Murfreesboro City Schools is a very significant enterprise, with assets of over $80 million, with capital assets of over $60 million to manage and to maintain, and with approximately $70 million of revenues and expenditures on an annual basis. It's a significant task, and the accounting team does an outstanding job. I'll go over the information in the booklet rather briefly. This is the required communications on an annual basis that the auditor is required to present to those charged with governance, which would, in this case, be you. And if you have questions, we're certainly prepared to respond to those. We've audited the financial statements of the government activities, the major funds, and the aggregate, remaining fund information of Murfreesboro City Schools for the year ended June 30, 2011, and have issued our unqualified opinion on those statements. We've also audited the combined and individual fund statements of the Murfreesboro City Schools Activity Funds, and we will be issuing our unqualified report on those statements. Our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards and under the OMB Circular A133, which is the single audit standard for auditing government funds that are provided through pass-through of the state of Tennessee, is to perform an audit and to opine on the fairness of the financial statements. The responsibility of those statements resides with the Murfreesboro City Schools and under your guidance. In planning and performing our audits, we evaluate the internal controls for the purpose of determining our timing and our scope, but not for the purpose of issuing a separate opinion on internal controls. We also test and review the internal controls regarding compliance over the federal programs. In the booklet, after the required comments, there is a management letter which we issued this year that indicates that there are no material weaknesses in internal controls, and the city school system continues to have an excellent control environment. We performed our audits in accordance with the plan and the engagement letter that we set forth earlier before we undertook the audit. Under the Significant Findings portion, the qualitative aspects of accounting practices, management is responsible for selecting the accounting policies. We evaluate those policies. They're enumerated in Note 2 to the financial statements. We found those policies to be sound and consistently applied. There were no really new policies implemented in the current year. There were no new requirements of the auditing standards that had to be addressed. The preparation of financial statements necessarily requires certain estimates. On behalf of management, to audit those estimates, we look at the historical results of prior estimates. We look at the rationale for the estimates, and we determine that they're reasonable. The major estimates embedded in the financial statements of Murfreesboro City Schools relate to the estimated lives of the capital assets, to the, and to the property tax receivables and collectibility of receivables recorded in the financial statements. We found that the financial statement disclosures are clear and concise. We encountered no difficulties in the performance of the audit. We received complete cooperation from all the members of the finance staff. There were no uncorrected misstatements. That's good news. That means that we didn't find anything that required adjustments. That's particularly important, because an audit's a point-of-time type process. You need to be satisfied that the information that you're making decisions on each time that you meet is accurate. We believe that you're working with good, solid information. We had no disagreements with management in the course of our audit. Management provided us representations at the end of the audits, and those representation letters, which are signed by the key administrative leaders, are included in the appendices to this booklet. There were no fraudulent acts or activities determined as a result of our audit, nor were any fraudulent activities disclosed to us through our discussions with management. We're not aware of any consultation with other accounting firms regarding accounting information or audit issues. We generally disclose, or discuss, a number of matters with management in advance of the audit and before we're re-elected on a recurring basis. But we don't make any concessions, or the election of us as auditors is not predetermined by any position that we take. We would also disclose that we are independent with respect to Murfreesboro City Schools and to the city of Murfreesboro. And I would conclude my remarks by saying that we are indeed appreciative of the leadership of Dr. Gilbert, of Gary Anderson, and particularly of Galena Bell, who does indeed provide us with incredible support, but also the other members of the finance staff that work so hard to provide us the information to complete our responsibilities. Happy to respond to any questions that anyone might have.
I just had a comment for Mr. Anderson and Mr. Felts. Could you just, for the sake of the folks at home that may be watching, let them know that this is cover the ESP budget and the school nutrition things?
Sure. The audit covers not only our general-purpose budget, it does cover all federal programs. It covers our school nutrition, which is part of federal program, and covers our extended school program. It also covers our site-based monies at our schools for our student activity fund. So it's basically, any money that passes through the system at all is covered by this audit report.
Thank you.
And I will just add that the level of federal funding and activities has been more and more significant, especially in the last couple of years, as the recovery funds have flowed through, over $5 million in recovery funds in this last period. But with those come a lot of compliance requirements and reporting requirements, and add a lot of responsibility to your financial team. They've done an excellent job of that. We've spent a significant amount of additional time looking at the compliance issues, and we've determined that the programs are well-controlled.
Thank you. Well done. Well done.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Really appreciate your work.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Smith?
And Ms. Bell, who doesn't want to be recognized.
Now, how long, Galena, how long have you been working on this? It's been a very long time, hasn't it?
Yes.
How many years?
I've been with the school for over 30 years.
Over 30 years. How's that possible, when you're as young as you are?
All righty. The first mental update is behind Tab 3, and Gary, if you'd go ahead and continue with the rest of it with the revenue and attendance, that would be great.
Okay. Your monthly revenue expenditure report is behind Tab 4. We are very close to crossing over the line into the positive category. As you know, our collections of sales tax and property tax comes in most heavily in the month of February, and that's, January, February, and that's based on the lag time from time that we get the information from the state and from the county and city. But right now, we're showing $256,451 negative, and we are at 58.3% of our, of our school year. So we're, next month, we should be in the black, which is where we typically cross over, is this month or next month. On the revenue side, we are, sales tax are up $20,000 year-to-date. That's slightly less than we had hoped for. We're hoping that when the Christmas and holiday revenues come in, the February report, that will, will show a significant increase at that time. And our property taxes are down $160,000 year-to-date, but that all has to do with timing, since they're not due finally until February 28, which would put it in the April report. So we're, we continue to monitor that. On the expenditure side, we are at 55.7% of our expenditures. Again, that's still a good position, since we're at over 58% of the year. We had picked up an earlier bill than typical, and that's the Workers' Comp Bill, which is, shows up on the Board of Education line, and you can compare this year to last year. There's a significant amount of difference, and that's more of a timing issue on that. And we also picked up in the last line, the Regular Capital Outlay Line. We're over on that one as well, and that's because of the fund balance approvals for the grant and the matching funds required for that grant in the Energy Efficiency Schools. So we feel also good about that on the revenue side, I mean, I'm sorry, on the expenditure side. If there's any questions on the financial report?
I just noticed that we're behind where we were last, last year percentage-wise in our revenue, and a little bit ahead of expenditures, and you did explain some of that. You still feel like we've got plenty of wiggle room? We're, we're going to be okay, not, not going to have to dive into the fund balance?
Yes. We anticipate we'll be okay. We don't know until the very end about the fund balance, because you did agree to spend some of the fund balance previously. We do have a significant fund balance heading into this, based on our June 30 audit report. So we're, we're not concerned that it's going to be significant to affect the system in any, any negative way that we, that we can cover.
And this is a little bit of an aside, but we, we've had all the, the money flowing through from the government for the Recovery Act. Are we still going to be pretty much having that money next year, or are we going to have to be finding money to cover some of that in our next budget?
That is an excellent question. There's multiple, multiple funds we're getting. Race to the Top Funds have an additional two more years, so we'll be good on, on positions and things that we're doing based on that. The Jobs Bill money was a two-year program, and we, some districts spent it all in year one. We chose two years, but that ends this year. So yes, there are funds that we're going to have to replace or make some adjustments in some other areas to reduce our expenditures.
Yes, we'll be hearing about that in a month.
We are, every day, we are actively working on our budget for next year. It's an exciting time.
Ms. Duggan?
When we look at the budget for the first time, would you please explicitly share with us those particular monies that we will no longer have and where, so we'll know exactly what we're speaking of? Because I have a general idea, but I'd like to know specifically, when we start looking at the budget, exactly what we're having to replace.
Yes, ma'am. Be glad to.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Attendance Report. That's behind Tab 5. At this point, we are 229 students above last year through Janu, through the end of January, and we are 151 over the budgeted amount that we had anticipated coming in. Our pupil teacher ratio in K through 3 is at 18.90, and our 4 through 6 ratio is at 20.55. Our overall pupil teacher ratio district-wide is at 19.51. Attendance-wise, we're hanging tough at 95.7. Last year, at this time, we were at 95.8, so we're right there. We are still significantly above what would be expected this time, so we're, we have very good attendance in our schools. That must mean they love to come to school.
Dr. Andrews?
Just a comment that we can thank Dr. Gilbert, and we also did send a letter to try to make sure that our school system wouldn't suffer by continuing to have low pupil teacher ratios. I think that's so important. I'll be going off the board soon, and I think all of you on the board know that I'm, really, that's been one of the things I'm committed to. I really think that when you have so many different levels of, of ability and different kinds of backgrounds and different kinds of learning styles in classrooms, that it's so important for teachers to have smaller class sizes, so they can teach to the individual. So I, you know, I'm really glad that, that our efforts and Dr. Gilbert's efforts in particular have paid off so far, but I, I think they're still going to try to sneak something by us if we don't keep an eye out, and we, we really do need to protect what we've done for the system. And I think that, you know, we have terrific teachers. They can only do so much, and we have to give them the best opportunity to use their skills to the, to the utmost. And we, we've got terrific teachers, and we need to keep them having class sizes where they can manage all the students they do have.
Yes, ma'am.
Amen.
Thank you for those words. You're exactly right. And I had told Mr. Anderson that I wouldn't say much about that tonight, but I'm extremely proud of this board for taking that stand. And those are your reports and information, Ms. Wade.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Is there any other business that we need to bring before the board at this time? There is one thing. We certainly am ve, we certainly are very happy for the new addition to our board. This is her second meeting, for those that see her for the first time tonight on camera. Thank you, Ms. Raniere, for your servitude.
Thank you.
Willing to give back. We certainly appreciate it, and we welcome you to this board officially.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
If there is no other business for this board, we will, we will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you.